Okay, I have seven o'clock. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Town of Queensbury Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is our first meeting for May, our tenth meeting thus far in two thousand and twenty-one, and our twenty-fifth meeting under our pandemic guidelines. If you have a tablet or other electronic device, cellphone, if you would please turn it off or turn the ringer off, we would appreciate that, so it won't interrupt our proceedings. Take note, if you would, of the red emergency exit lights, in the event of emergency, that is the way out. Those of you who are planning on using the podium to speak to the board this evening, you'll note that there are some sanitary wipes in the podium when you're through speaking. If you would wipe off the microphone for the next speaker, please. And the other thing, it's noted that we have, the seating capacity is full or at capacity in with us this evening, and there, I don't believe that there is actually, as it stands now, room for all of the applicants to appear in the room. So if you're here to really just listen to the proceedings, maybe you'd be willing to step out in the next room, so that the, any applicants that wish to actually sit in the room can do so. Let's see. We have a few administrative items this evening. The first is approval of minutes from March sixteenth and March twenty-third and March twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-one. I believe we have a resolution to that effect.
Motion to approve Town of Queensbury minutes of March sixteenth, March twenty-third, March twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-one.
Seconded. We have an approval of minutes, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion or any corrections concerns people have with any of those minutes? Harry Dunn, Maria, can you call the vote force, please?
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Trevor?
Yes. All right, thank you. And then we also have a couple of requests for extensions, the first being Site Plan eight dash two thousand and twenty for Thomas Hazelman. He's requesting a one-year extension. Laura?
Laura, you should just go. He should just let them.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't see that. She was back, she just had to go get her own, you really won't let them yet. Okay.
She has to pull around here. She'll get them.
Yeah. So, just by way of background, we, we, we approved this first item back, yeah, it appears May twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty, and they're coming up, the information I had doesn't, oh, here it is, okay. They're not terribly specific, they just say that there are several reasons, the project has not yet begun, and they are requesting a one-year extension prior to their one-year approval expiring. Does anyone have any concerns or issues with granting their first one year and hopefully their last one-year extension?
Only that building material is going to skyrocket.
Yeah. Okay. I believe we have a draft resolution.
Yes, we do. Motion to approve a one-year extension for Site Plan eight dash two thousand and twenty, Thomas Hazelman. To the, to the extension today.
I didn't realize that was coming. It is. Did you finish the motion, Lee? I'll second it.
This is why I'm done with my votes.
The motion is seconded, is there any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have a couple of public.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
What was the address again?
Can I vote, Paul?
Mr. Dixon.
Oh, yes.
I think there's two resolutions for that.
No, we're going to be requesting lead agency status on that application, so there will not be.
There's also first.
We will only have a specific comment, because we have not seen it. That will, that will likely be next month. Yep.
Laura, do you use a separate resolution?
Sure, yep.
For our, for our meeting as well?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
My apologies.
It's okay, I took over.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, so.
You've got to get your votes, Steve.
Oh, and this is for Bernard?
Extension.
Oh, oh, it's high proof. Next, we have also another administrative items, Site Plan seventy-nine dash two thousand and nineteen, freshwater wetlands permit, eight dash two thousand and nineteen for Don Bernard, also requesting a one-year extension. Laura, do you have any detail on that?
Mr. Bernard is still in the house, but he said he's, um, demoing. Can you just be a little closer to your microphone? It's really hard to. Is it still not working? Hello?
Oh, that's much better, yes, thank you.
So, Mr. Bernard was able to demo the, the house, but he has not been able to start construction, so that we thought it was best that he request his extension, and he's asked for a one-year extension.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the area has been cleared, but the construction of the house has not yet been done, and they would like to also receive a one-year extension. Does anyone have any issues with that? I believe we have a draft resolution to that effect.
Motion to approve a one-year extension for Site Plan seventy-nine dash two thousand and nineteen, and freshwater wetlands permit eight dash two thousand and nineteen, Don Bernard.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Maria, can you call the vote force, please?
Mr. Trevor?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Trevor?
Yes. All right, so next we move to our regular agenda. The first item is LaFatte Holdings, Site Plan thirty-four dash two thousand and twenty-one. This is going to be, the planning board this evening, our action will be to request a lead agency status. Laura?
So, this applicant proposes to construct two four-unit buildings, each building to be three thousand two hundred square feet. The units are to have a garage and bedrooms, as well, and a driveway onto Manor Drive. This project comes before this board as a lead request, lead agency request, because that project also is subject to variances with the zoning board of appeals, and therefore it's under coordinated review, which we can do. So, at this point, you could ask lead agency status, that information will be shared with the zoning board of appeals, and we would typically assume that they would grant that, and then this project would be back potentially the first meeting in June for planning board meetings.
Okay. Thank you. So, the first action is, as stated, is to request lead agency status for coordinated review, and there's a thirty-day process for that to take place, and then we'll be presumably reviewing this application in June, next month. In June, we may start secret review next month, and referral to the zoning board next Any discussion on that process? Questions?
Mr. Turner, I have a question about, Laura used the term coordinated environmental review.
Yes.
I'm not sure what our, as a planning board body, role would be in that coordinated review.
Yep, so I can explain that. So coordinated review is under, this project triggers an environmental review, because it's greater than four thousand square feet. So those forms that you typically see at the end of a package called environmental form, is this one would be a short environmental form. Those are the items that you're going to go through, and determine if those are significant impacts or non-significant impacts. What you usually see the environmental review for is subdivisions versus standard projects. We typically don't have a project that's greater than four thousand square feet. We typically have projects that are reusing existing buildings, small additions, or round work project stuff. So this is one we haven't, obviously, we don't get it a lot. So, at the moment, we're doing this coordinated review, so that you take lead agency, this is a step in the process, and then the zoning board would grant lead agency status to you. The planning board would then conduct seeker at their next meeting, then make that, explain to the zoning board what their decision was. Typically, you would grant a, a meg deck, which would be determining that it's non-significant, and that, that could be the outcome of this, and then you would, the zoning board could act on their variance request, and then the application would come back to this planning board to conduct the actual site plan review.
So we don't need to do a separate environmental studies, and simply we're giving the data as provided by?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the process? Okay, I believe we have a draft resolution made in the request.
Motion to seek lead agency status in connection with Site Plan thirty-four dash two thousand and twenty-one, LaFatte Holdings has triggered a, 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 a review.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion made seconded, is there any further discussion? Harry Dunn, Maria, can you call the vote force, please?
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Trevor?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now we move into the more regular part of our agenda, and I wanted to note, for those that are observing this proceeding on the town YouTube channel, there are a few applications that are subject to public hearing, and individuals can either be present, or there is a telephone available that you can call in to make public comment at that point in the agenda, and we will be announcing the public hearing for those projects for which it's applicable. And you should make note in advance of this phone number. That number is area code five one eight, seven six one, eight two two five. That is the number that you would want to call, and I will repeat it at the time that the public hearings are, are open. With that, we'll go to table items. The first item is Native Development Associates LLC, subdivision primary stage five dash two thousand and twenty-one, and final stage six dash two thousand and twenty-one. Laura?
Okay, so this is a similar project done before the board. The applicant proposes five lots, and I won't go through and identify each lot, but there are five lots. One of those lots contains the existing building. The project includes stormwater management grading and erosion control. And then, under my staff notes, I'll just highlight that part, the applicant has referred, been referred to the Chasen Engineering for their proposal. Information came back on May fourteenth. I did supply the board this afternoon with a, an email copy of the response letter. This information included, you know, they've responded to unaccounted stormwater, clearing the entire site, and need for additional stormwater analysis, they've addressed those items. However, it has not been seen by Chasen at this time. Just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and John's here to speak on it.
Sorry, what happened here, the last question?
So, in reference to what was addressed today, so today, I sent to the board.
I got that from.
Okay. And then, so then, the applicant addressed some of the items that were in question about unaccounted stormwater, clearing the entire site, the need for additional stormwater analysis, information on the retaining walls, or retaining wall, and needs to review prior to construction, and other technical comments. The applicant has provided responses to those, but Chasen has not had a chance to review that yet. I just, I can note that in reference to the clearing, that the applicant is, is proposing clearing, but the, the stumps will remain.
Thank you.
There are, the stumps have been removed, as the sites are developed, right?
That's right.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, John Lapper, Tim Barber, the applicant, is here, as well as we, last year, the project engineer. So we were here at the beginning of COVID last year on this project, five lots, it used to be the big, uh, native textile building at the end of the, uh, 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 park. You granted us a conditional approval, but partly because of COVID and dealing with the agencies, and the plans have changed enough in dealing with the, with the Chasen comments that Craig thought it was best that we just resubmit, um, under COVID, there's, uh, one of the executive orders is that the six months would be extended, but, but the lots have changed enough that Craig thought it was best that we come back, and that's what we did. We were on the agenda for last month, but at that point, we had a very long Chasen letter, and now we have a very short Chasen letter, and that was what Laura was referring to. One of the issues that Chasen raised was that they, they interpreted that everything was going to be cleared, like thirty acres, which would have been a massive stormwater project, that it's really just about going in and leaving the stumps, as the chairman said, and not creating a stormwater issue until you need to do it on a lot-by-lot basis, which would be subject to site plan review. So we're just here for subdivision, so that we can start, so that Tim can start leasing the, the sites and doing construction, but the big building, the native building, which sat vacant for years, is now fully leased, and, you know, in this economy, warehouse space is valuable, and it's near the northway, so just like when you approved it last time, we're, we're a lot farther along, because we have, the response letter today was just, you know, some pretty simple stuff, and that's why Laura sent it to you. So, you know, with that long-winded explanation, I'll ask Luigi to just go through it and show you what's changed since last time.
Good evening, Luigi Palleschi with ABD Engineers. To, to back up the, the comment letter that we received for the last meeting, I believe we were up to thirty comments or so. A lot of those comments, in, in fact, with, with what we've received lately, that's fourteen comments, a lot of those comments actually refer back to a lot-by-lot basis. Early on, when we presented this project, the five lots, and our conceptual building layout for each lot, we had agreed that we would come back for further detailed review for each of those lots. Okay, so what you have before you today is the five-lot subdivision, and the intent is to clear, clear the, you know, all of the five lots, but leave the stumps, as John Lapper had mentioned, on the other lots, we leave the stumps, but the only stumps that would need to be removed is the roadway, the stormwater areas. So when I took the fourteen comments that Chasen recently provided to us and we responded to, we went through and, and addressed all of the technical comments. We haven't gone through and detailed that exactly every lot-by-lot, but for instance, when they made comment about you're clear-cutting the whole site, we've added additional notes to the site plans to ensure the contractor that all we're looking to do for this right now is to clear the road, get it built per town standards, so that we can market the other five lots, and as soon as a tenant is available, then we will come back in for a lot-by-lot basis, and, and take one lot at a time, and, and come through detailed site plan review. So all of the stormwater measures have been addressed. If you read the, the comment letters from Chasen, they had referred to a dam design. I actually reached out to New York State DEC, and I spoke with the gentleman there that's in charge of the, the dam safety division, and I shared the latest plans with him, and he, he's acceptable to our design. So, we feel that, at this point, we actually have a, a better plan than what was previously approved, and we've had, have additional notes on the plans to date that will ensure the contractor to do his job as he constructs this project. You know, we're certainly looking forward to bringing, you know, the next lot in for you for a detailed review of that lot, but this is really important to get started on the roadway and build it for town standards. So I'd be happy to go through, you know, the fourteen comments, if you'd like, but I think really the two major concerns, from my understanding, was, you know, understanding the clear-cutting. I think, you know, what I said here is understandable now, and the other thing was whether or not we had enough volume, or confirming the volume in the stormwater basin, which we have done also. So, all the other stuff, again, they refer to detailed design for the retaining walls, which those retaining walls are proposed on the individual lots. Everybody will get a second look at those details when we get to that point, because, you know, what we show conceptually goes to the, the, you know, a common stormwater practice. However, when, you know, say we develop lot three, the footprint of that building may change a little bit, the parking size may change a little bit, so that's where we really get into the nitty-gritty details of site plan for that particular lot. So I hope that helps better understand, you know, the intent and how we'd like to move forward. And again, if there's any questions regarding the plans to date, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before we get to questions, let me also remind the public that we do have a public hearing on this application this evening, which we will now open, and I will remind folks that may be calling in, that the phone number is area code five one eight, seven six one, eight two two five. And my first question is, I, I know that occasionally with large numbers of engineering comments, sometimes we'll table applications, and one of the conditions is that those, those engineering issues be resolved prior to rehearing the application. Is this, is that true in this case?
So there, I mean, we can go through them, you know, like the first one, they scaled on our drawing, the width of our infiltration trench.
Sir, that's a yes or no question.
I'm sorry. Ask it again, so that I understand.
Yeah, actually, maybe I should ask Laura. Laura, do you recall when we tabled this, if it was, if one of the conditions was that the engineering comments were to be resolved prior to rehearing?
I don't think it was necessarily, I've given them guidance that there were numerous comments that they should address, and the applicant has attempted to do that.
Right.
We just don't, we don't have the response on this latest set of comments.
Right, right, understood.
So typically, the board has tabled that, but that is, that is, again, is at your discretion.
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
How many comments have been resolved?
Well, technically, none yet, because they responded to a number, but we haven't, Chasen hasn't responded to their response.
At all, to any of them?
Well, we, we.
Well, they did, the, the, so they did respond to the set of comments that was submitted as part of this review for tonight's meeting. However, what today occurred, or yesterday, today, Luigi responded to the late, those comments to Chasen.
Okay.
Chasen has not seen those yet.
Okay. Yeah, so we received comments on the, the thirteenth or fourteenth last week, Thursday or Friday, and we worked over the weekend and provided the responses, just so we had something for this meeting, so that we hope this board felt comfortable with our responses to the latest comments. We weren't going to wait another, you know, weeks to respond to the comments, because, you know, we would like to move this forward, so we wanted to address the comments as quickly as possible. But, you know, just, we've reached out to DEC, and, and all he is making reference to is just verify the stormwater volume, you know, so it's, it's as simple as that. We have the calculations that we provided to them. DEC has already looked at it, but I think it's just Chasen doing what they do, and just kind of reiterating so that there's a good communication back and forth. It's not that we're lacking anything, it's just more of a clarification, and, you know, I understand when you look at the number of comments, sometimes, you know, four pages can look like a lot, but if you, you know, go through them, a lot of them are just minor technical items.
And this application is subject to environmental review as well, which, which makes the absence of engineering clarification a, potentially, a, a bit of a stumbling block for us, but we'll see.
Well, I, I still, clarification. You've responded to Chasen. Chasen has not responded back to you.
Right, because we just provided the latest responses.
Just the timing. They haven't.
I understand that.
But.
We don't know what their answer is.
That's right.
But prior.
Not all the comments have been responded to, either.
But prior to this meeting, we received comments, and there were thirty-some-odd comments. We've addressed those comments, and we were supposed to appear before this board last, what, last month, but because Chasen didn't get a, didn't get a chance to review the thirty-some-odd responses, right, I think it was the best decision to table it. Then we received these just last Thursday or Friday, and they were a lot simpler than the thirty comments, and we've quickly addressed those here tonight, so.
Well, you responded.
That's why they haven't had a chance to, you know, to look at this, but.
Right.
Okay, you responded back, and you're waiting to hear from them. And, and of course, your cabinet about engineering sign-off has always been true. Ever since I've been doing this. Okay?
I mean, the last time we, this board granted approval, we had thirty-some-odd comments. You know, now we're, we're down to minimal, so.
Questions, comments from members of the board?
Just to clarify, you are not going to clear-cut all thirty acres?
We will cut them, but we will leave the stumps on the individual lots, and only remove the stumps within the cul-de-sac area and the stormwater area.
What is the point of cutting all the trees and leaving the stumps?
Because when you get the logger in there, you know, you, you get them in there at once, there's some trees in there that need to come out, so, you know, if you have the logger in there, you want to get them in there now, rather than mobilize them more than once.
But if you have to come back on a site-by-site basis, why not clear-cut as you come back with a site plan?
Yeah, for a site this size, it, it's always good to get a shovel-ready look, so if you cut the trees, you get a prospective tenant that comes in there, they can see the lay of the land when the trees are down, so it does help with marketability. But, you know, we understand the, the stormwater side of it, the erosion and control side. If we leave the stumps, then it doesn't affect us to SWIP, the stormwater management, because the stumps are, are to remain. We're not actually disturbing the soil.
So the stormwater for each site will be correlated with the timing of removing the stumps and doing the greeding?
Yes. Yeah, and, and, you know, if you look at the design, the stormwater is in the center of the site, where everything is draining to that center, and it's actually designed for all that impervious rooftop. If you cut the trees, that stormwater basin is certainly large enough for the grass area, there are stumps that would drain to that stormwater area when we build it. And then, you know, obviously, when we develop or detail the lot-by-lot, then, you know, that stormwater basin's already sized.
However, that's one of the issues that, the engineering sign-off still remains outstanding, correct? The stormwater issue. I mean, I understand.
I don't think so.
Their response to their concern.
Right, yeah, we do not have a final sign-off letter.
We'll cut everything down except the stump, but the stump will still be there.
Right.
But we don't know how, whether Chasen is going to consider that an acceptable solution to the stormwater issue, correct?
Correct, but, you know, the, the definition of soil disturbance is if you leave the stump, it's not considered disturbance. And again, we have a SWIP in place, we understand the, you know, can't disturb, soil disturb more than five acres at one time, that's all implemented in the SWIP. Chasen has reviewed the SWIP, and, you know, they had comments on the stormwater component of it, but not, you know, the, the SWIP document that we've provided, we're still waiting, you know, or, actually, the last time, we provided that document, and, you know, we didn't make any changes to the SWIP, because it, it talks about all the erosion and sediment control. The only thing we did change to benefit their comment was on sheet three or four of our site plan, we've added additional notes that they recommended. So if we added those notes that they recommended, then, you know, I don't, really don't see an issue, you know, with that, you know. It's not. you know, with that, you know. It's not like, you know, if they say add this note, I added that note. I didn't change it, I didn't question it, like, I'm not going to add the note, I added the note, so I'm assuming, unless they come up with additional comments, which have, has happened.
Right.
But, you know, to date, we believe we've addressed every comment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I-
Yes, sir.
So, if we go back to the original plan, we're talking about, it's still essentially, I look at it as clear cutting, but in the original plan and proposal, was it to remove trees lot by lot as it was being developed?
No, on the original plan, we had proposed what the tree line, the proposed tree line would look like, and it would be up to the property line.
My only concern that I have, and again, I apologize, I don't recall the original, I remember the plans, I just don't recall all the fine details, but I do recall that we've got a neighborhood in the northeast corridor there. So now, if all the trees are coming down and this land remains idle for two years, three years, is your intent to, I don't recall if you were planting a tree line or just repurposing the trees that were there?
So, we had proposed a stockade fence in that back corner-
Right.
-for the buffer. That is what we had discussed at the last meeting, and that is still the same in this plan.
And would you put that in prior to the buildings, then?
We certainly can, yes. If you want to make that a condition, the, that fence can go in. So if the trees come down, the fence would immediately go up along the neighbors there.
And on the fan, the stockade fence only shows that it's going down to, about halfway down to the lands of Christine Moretta Davis. And I'm not sure what the rest of the board's thought is on this, but it looks like it should certainly come down much further. And again, I'm just wrestling in my mind, just the neighbors, you've got some very good neighbors there, looking out over a wasteland for several, hopefully just several months, but-
So, we have it proposed up to the property line of Kenneth Holst-Dettler and the church.
Okay. Thank you.
And then same thing going along the northern property line. We have it going pretty much up to the ravine, but these are all commercial over on this side.
You've got the advantage, you've got the big copy.
Yes. Yeah, and if it's something that, you know, we just need to identify, start a fence and a fence, that's very simple to do on a site plan, so again, the communication is relay on, you know, instruction. And we can make that on the plan, I'll, you know, I'll make sure there's no states where to start and end six-foot stockade fence.
Six or eight? You got six or eight foot, you have six on there?
Six foot, we have six-foot high stockade fence.
I'm not comfortable with eight, but-
Eight. So, there is a section in that corner where we're proposing a retaining wall, and this would sit up on that retaining wall, so it would appear, and that would be-
That's fine.
Yeah, it's not the entire length, but there is a good section of retaining wall in that corner where the fence would be on top of.
And how, how long is the fence going to be? What's the length of the fence, do you know?
Um, if I just scale it here, I'd say around 700, 800 feet. That's the, you got the stockade fence, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Are there any written comments from the public, Laura? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience with us tonight that wanted to make a public comment on this application? Not seeing any. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We next have to consider the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There is a SECRE resolution that has to be processed by this board. How do members feel? We know that there are outstanding engineering comments.
I don't feel comfortable going forward with the SECRE first one.
Yeah, the absence of a resolution of the stormwater is potentially concerning. How do board members feel about?
Well, we have to have engineering sign-off. That's the safe, that's the safe. So, if it's not done, and engineering doesn't sign off, they're going to have to come back. So, we've had that forever.
But I understand, I understand what you're saying, but that's a separate process from this board giving an environmental review, and that's based on the knowledge that we currently have. So, if we say there's no environmental impact and potentially there's an engineering issue that potentially changes the project or something, I'm not sure where that leaves us.
I don't, yeah. I was going to say, I'll wait till you finish. I mean, looking at the most recent letter from Chazen, I don't see anything in there that causes me trouble. A lot of it is just clear, I don't want to reiterate the applicant's comments, but a lot of it is just clarification. You know, one of the runoff concerns was the hydroCAD model has a basal surface area of 38,845 feet. However, our calculations show approximately 1,500 feet less. I don't see that as being a significant adjustment either way.
Right. Yeah, and there often, as we know, there's often technical issues like that with, with-
I mean, it's 3%, so I don't see that as being significant.
Laura-
I'm sorry, 5%.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If we go ahead with the SECRE, and the engineering comments trigger something else, would we have to do a new SECRE after that?
You would have to revisit SECRE.
I was going to say, we could.
So, we could still do it. If we have to revisit it, we can still revisit it.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I still have a concern about clear cutting all 30 acres. If the purpose of clear cutting 30, well, let me ask you a question. How long, under the best of circumstances, would it take to develop the entire parcel with five buildings?
I bet they wish they knew the answer to that question.
Well, but it has an impact, it seems to me, on-
Yeah.
-the issue of clear cutting. If you clear cut the entire parcel for purposes of having a better, or a simpler, or a less costly stormwater report, because you can take advantage of the stumps. Compare that to five separate stormwater reports, one now for the overall, and then maybe four others as each building is done, the stormwater situation will change as each building and site is developed. So, I still have heartburn about clearing the entire parcel.
Yeah, my stormwater design is designed for worst-case scenario, okay? Taking that impervious that you see on my plan, which is conceptual, and it may be aggressive, but I'm designing it for that impervious. So, I'm holding the whole 100-year per DEC stormwater regulations, and, you know, every time you do a concept sketch, yes, it will change, because you'll have exact building footprints, door locations, so, you know, that impervious, in my opinion, may go down a little bit, you know, on one lot versus another, so-
But you have to meet-
The stormwater is designed for it, I guess.
You have to meet the stormwater requirements, whether you do it for the entire 30 acres at one time, or if you do it as each building is erected. You have, there are certain requirements in stormwater that you have to meet.
Well, actually, each lot as it's developed is going to be reviewed in any case.
Is what?
Each lot, as it is sold and developed, is subject to additional review anyway.
I understand, but the way they're proposing to clear cut all 30 acres, the other four building sites could sit there for X period of time, and we don't know that-
Right, right.
-with nothing but stumps.
Correct, but if they can, if they can argue that the engineering will support stormwater to do that in an environmentally safe way, then they have a sign-off from the engineer.
I'm sure they can make it work from a stormwater standpoint by clear cutting all 30 acres, and they've shown they can do that. The question is, is that the right approach, we think, for this particular parcel to be developed?
Can I speak on that?
Yes, please do. Just state your name for the record, if you would.
Tim Barber from Native Development. This is an industrial piece of property, it's, you know, it's not a residential piece of property. In order to market this property to some major players that were entertaining, they need to see it. They don't need to see a forest, they need to see the property, they need to walk it, they need to conceptually go over the whole thing. You know, it's not a town park. It's going to be cleared, you know, it's, we have all the engineering that supports it, and it's just, it's very, it's a very important part of the marketing aspect of it, to have our clients come out there, see it, not see a forest.
So, you think a marketer, a developer who wants to buy one of these parcels, is going to think it looks better with a bunch of stumps than with the trees still there?
You're not going to see the stumps, they're going to be cut at grade level, it's going to look, it's going to look like it's cleared. We're not, it's going to, it's not going to be a disaster, it's going to be a manicured site with absence of the trees. The stumps are going to be cut at ground level, as all the shrubs and brush, and I, you know, on this, if it makes you feel better, or the board feel better, we could leave a 30-foot buffer at this time around the property line, which we can, we can address as each, as each parcel is developed. But it's important to us to be able to show the entire property. Right now, you go back there, and it's a forest. It's very hard to show.
And a 30 acre, a 30-foot buffer would leave enough of each of the other four lots open so that a developer could see it well enough to decide and so on?
Correct.
I think that's a terrific idea, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, yep.
It gives us just the opportunity to, when we bring these people in, to look at the whole thing.
But the 30-foot buffer solves the issue of 30 acres of stumps.
I, I-
Good idea.
And I understand what you're saying, but I think, once, once you, once you see it, you're, you're, you're not going to see erratic stumps up and down, it's going to be, it's going to more or less look like a field. It's going to, it's going to be manicured, it's going to look good. It has to look good for our marketability.
All right, Tim, I agree, I have to agree with you. It's an industrial lot, it's not, like you said, a public park, or, and that's, people are going to expect that. So, it's out of view, because it's in the back, and it's going to be cut eventually, and I'm optimistic. I think you're going to be leasing those lots, hopefully.
I think they're going to go fairly quick.
Fairly quickly. So, I don't have a problem. I like the 30-foot buffer.
Yeah.
I do like that a lot, and that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, it's a good compromise.
That really counts for you now, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, or, any other questions specifically regarding environmental impacts? Okay, thank you. All right, well, I guess our next action then is to consider SECRE. We talked about stormwater, the applicant has offered the 30-foot buffer. It was pointed out that if there are continuing, ongoing engineering issues that may impact, that may have environmental impacts, we may need to revisit SECRE. But I think at this stage, with the information, further information offered by the applicant, I'm comfortable moving forward with the environmental review, as long as it's subject to review later if there are issues that are unresolved. So, I think we have a draft resolution to that effect.
Motion to grant a negative declaration for subdivision preliminary stage 5-2021 Native Development Association, as per the resolution prepared by staff. Part 2 of the law EAF has been reviewed and completed by the planning board.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have SECRE resolution made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on environmental impacts?
Did you close the public hearing?
What's that?
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Do we need to say anything specifically about that 30-foot buffer at this point?
That comes with it.
Yes, it's going to be on.
He did.
He's on top of it. All right, Maria, can you call a vote on SECRE, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Draper?
Yes. All right, so next we move on to preliminary stage subdivision 5-2021, and I believe we have a resolution to that effect.
I'll get the final one, see if I can find the preliminary.
It was right before it.
I know. Well, how about right here?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve subdivision preliminary stage 5-2021 Native Development Association, LLC.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have preliminary approval made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Maria, can you call a vote for us, please?
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Draper?
Yes. All right, thank you, and next we move to the final stage where we have our conditions. And I know you've been working on a resolution, so, ready?
Motion to approve subdivision final stage 6-2021 Native Development Association, LLC. The require, one, the requirements of State Environmental Quality Review Act has been considered, and the planning board has adopted a SECRE negative declaration. Two, waivers request granted, and also adherence to the items 3 through 15 of this resolution, and 16, a 6-foot stockade fence of 800 feet to be put up when the trees are, when trees are cleared. And 17, a 30-foot buffer to, tree buffer to remain on each of the lots.
Until they're developed, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Until, okay, until they're developed, until developed.
Mr. Secretary, did we want to do anything as far as that stockade, the beginning point and the end point?
I don't know what.
I'll certainly add that to the plan, but just to clarify when to install the stockade fence, would that be after, like, the 30-foot comes in now? Because now we have a 30-foot buffer, and I think it would be difficult to put the fence in through trees.
Yes. Okay, let me rephrase that. When the trees, if, we put up when the trees are cleared?
Well, you can just say when the lots develop.
And, oh, okay, when the lots, when the lots are developed.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we have an amended motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yep, I have a discussion. So, in reference to the 30-foot buffer, are you talking the perimeter of the main lot, or each lot of, he has five lots proposed, are you talking 30 feet at the border of each lot, or the perimeter of the entire, the 33 acres?
I was only pressing as each lot.
Perimeter of the 33 acres.
Oh, who didn't?
Right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was assuming.
Let me amend this.
I'm just stating this, even though the residential's only in that northwest corner, I thought that was the most, you'd like to do it around the whole thing.
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah. Okay, a 30-foot buffer, tree buffers remain on the 33, on the perimeter of the 33 acres.
Can I say one more thing, just to see if we can get some writing out here?
No.
I think the easternmost part that's facing, really, all the commercial property would not need a buffer there. If we're just talking buffer, I would just say the north, west, and south, instead of the full perimeter. I don't know what your thoughts are on that. That way, anybody driving in for a commercial property, they will see the entire laid land as they're driving in there.
You're working with that?
No, no, far from it. I just want it to be reasonable.
I think that's acceptable.
I, I'm okay with that. I mean, I think Tim would be all right with that. I mean, it's, it's, well, cutting and, you know-
So, it's three of the four sides of the-
If I clarify, it'd be the north side, you know, the north side, the west side, and the south side.
Yeah.
We're not touching the east side. It's already built. It's already built.
Good point.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, amend, amend the amended.
Mr. Dean, could you possibly just redo the motion, just so I know that?
Yeah, let me go through it again. I'll do the whole thing. All right. Motion to approve subdivision final stage six dash two thousand twenty-one, Native Development Association LLC. One, the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act have been considered, and the planning board has adopted a SECRE negative declaration. Two, waiver request granted. Also adherence to the items three through fifteen of this resolution, including, and sixteen, a six-foot stockade fence to be put up when the, a six-foot, eight-hundred-foot stockade fence to be put up when the trees are cleared and when the lots are developed. No, take out the, when the trees are cleared, when the lots are developed. Seventeen, a thirty-foot buffer, tree buffer to remain on the north, west, and south side of the thirty-three acre.
Until developed, right?
Yeah, well, they're going to come in for site plan review for each lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I think we might be close.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion?
I'm just going to identify that, I understand that you gave a, you're asking for that stockade fence when that particular lot of trees is cleared. When that particular lot does come in, that waiver request comes back to this board about the buffer requirement, so that, that will be revisited. So it's not a, so I think that, I just want to make sure you under, I would encourage you to rethink that, you know, identify that in some way that, because otherwise you're granting that as a six-foot stockade fence. Site plan review may, may have additional buffer requirements for the lots that are facing the residential area, I guess. And I, you can, if you don't wish to do that, that's fine.
So you're suggesting that we set that aside for now and deal with it as they come in?
Well, that's what we did anyway. They're not going to put it up until that lot gets developed.
Right, I mean, I'd hate to have you lose it, but I don't want it from the resolution, but I.
So you want to delete it from the resolution?
No, leave it in. I'll change my mind. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I am not rereading.
You don't need to.
Well, it's, so far it's not true.
I just think that's a good point that Laura makes, though.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll revisit that as they come in.
Yeah.
We still will revisit it, I mean.
Yes. And they won't be, they won't be doing it anyway, I'm sure, until after they.
It can be modified, right, Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, good point. Okay, we're closer. Is there, is there any, any other discussion? Let's see, and that was, was that, when that was re-read, was that seconded again?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Maria, can you call the vote for us, please?
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Draper?
Yes. You are all set.
Thank you.
You're going to have to redo them, right?
Yes.
We don't want the.
No, nope. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. I hope you fill up quick.
All right, next under tabled items, we have Dark Bay Properties LLC, site plan modification, twenty-seven dash twenty-one.
I don't think anybody took the podium.
I'm sorry, what was that?
They didn't clean the podium?
There was no cleaning of the podium at the end.
They didn't wipe it down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't notice that.
That's okay.
Thanks for doing that. Have you figured to ask for the man?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'll start off. This application was tabled at the previous month's meeting because it was recognized that there's two lots involved. And I noted that as part of this application that because of its location, it's noted for planning and zoning purposes, it's treated as one lot, but there are two lots as part of this project. One portion of the lot is to include a seven-hundred-and-ninety-square-foot paved area, and then the other part of the lot is to improve a swimming area with a picnic area and aluminum stairs to the shoreline.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Good evening.
Good evening. Greg Terese, I'm a member of Dark Bay Properties and a resident for the last six years at the principal site, the larger of the two lots, which is, the SBL number is twenty-seven point one. The, the reason that I've made this, filed this application on behalf of the company is the wooded lot, which is in part, part of twenty-seven point one, and the entire portion of twenty-seven point two has been, in my opinion, neglected over the years. There are two large debris piles that were just left there by the previous owner, probably when they first went and put in the driveway about ten years ago, and probably when they did some landscaping work in between the two principal structures. I want to be able to access the property with a small tractor or skid steer to be able to remove those large debris piles. There's also a tremendous amount of blowdown. Anybody that drove by the, the property would have seen a large white pine, probably this big around, that cuts through the middle of the property running to the east. I'd like to be able to get that out of there, try to promote some new growth, some new trees, to continue the privacy between my property and the neighbor to the east, Chris Freihoffer. The other reason that I wanted to access that land is there's an old stone house that was there. Chris Freihoffer thinks that it was an ice house at one point. They've left, when they, when it deteriorated and fell down, there was all kinds of concrete and tanks and stuff that really probably shouldn't be there. My wife and I just had our first son about eight months ago and have visions of him someday, although not too soon, playing in those woods and, you know, taking advantage of the nature. And there's concerns between my wife and I as to, you know, some of these tanks and him getting into trouble playing around them. The second part of the application is there's, as indicated on the map, on twenty-seven point two, there's an existing set of stairs that have been there for probably, if I had to guess, maybe fifty-plus years. Over the years, the stairs have deteriorated to the point where they're really not usable. There's a nice sandy beach area in that portion of our bay that, again, you know, with the mindset of trying to raise our son, teach him how to swim and things like that, we'd like to be able to access that or have him be able to access that under our supervision. So we'd like to bring those stairs back into some usable form. And then the third component is, just above those stairs, the terrain isn't the best over the years. And part of the reason that the stairs have deteriorated is that the erosion on the embankment, it's probably, oh, maybe fifteen-foot embankment, has created a, for, in my estimation, an unstable and unstable area. So I'd like to take some of the existing stone that's on the property, some of the native stone, build up a, a little bit of a, probably a two-foot wall at its highest, and try to level that off so that when you're accessing the stairs, you're not going down into a deep ravine so that it's safe to access those stairs. The other part of the plan is to, although not before the board, but just in the spirit of full disclosure, is to remove a lot of the dead trees that are lying dead and try to clean it up a little bit, promote some new growth, some new vegetation. I'm actively pursuing a forester to come in and give me some advice and guidance on how to properly manage the woods and, you know, so that adds something to the, to the lake as well as the Adirondack Park. Any questions?
Before we get to questions, I want to advise the public that we will be holding a public hearing on this application. In fact, we'll open it right now. If you wish to address this application with the planning board and make public comment by phone, the phone number to call is area code five-one-eight-seven-six-one-eight-two-two-five. With that, we'll ask for questions, comments from members of the board.
There was a note on the plan by the steps which says to be permitted by the Lake George Park Commission. Could you update us on where that stands?
Sure, I did reach out to Joe Thune with the Lake George Park Commission, advised him of my desire to put a set of aluminum retractable stairs in there. And Mr. Thune has indicated that because it's not a permanent structure in the lake and it can be removed, that it would not need Park Commission approval.
Anything else? We do have a public hearing on this application, as I mentioned. Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to address the planning board on this application? Yes, ma'am. If you would give up the podium, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Kuplee. I'm an attorney with Caffrey &amp; Flower. We are representing the neighbor, Charles Freihoffer. We are not opposing the proposed physical changes to the land. However, before this application can be approved, the applicant must do two things. Both are related to the 2020 judgment from the Supreme Court, which confirmed this board's decision that these two tax lots that comprise the project site were merged into a single lot and that the smaller lot is not a buildable lot, which was previously mentioned. So to that end, there's two things that we would like to see done before this can be approved. First, the site plan should be revised to show that the two tax map parcels are not, are a single lot for zoning purposes. In an earlier letter, it was pointed out that the site plan didn't reflect that the properties were still owned by different parties. They're now owned by the same party, but it does not show that the lots are merged. So to fix this, for example, the plan should not be showing two separate side yard setbacks for the two tax map lot numbers like it does on this plan. It should just be around the perimeter. These internal lines were added to the revised site plan, but were not on the original. And so they should be removed because as it stands, looking at this, it is misleading as to what you can do on the lots. Second, the applicant must combine the two tax maps lots by recording a merger deed that combines the properties. A deed has been recorded that conveyed the smaller parcel to Dark Bay so that the parcels do share ownership again, but that deed did not include merger language, so the property record just reflects that there's a single owner with two neighboring lots, not that it's a single lot for zoning purposes. Now, the reason that this is important is that until there is a deed showing that these have been merged, the property record reflects this, this error. And then that false idea would then be reinforced by the site plan on record showing the side yard setbacks, as though they were not a single lot. So this has happened before, and the client does not want this to happen again and have to relitigate this settled matter. So the lack of merger deed in the revised site plan leave the door open for a mess down the line with potential future owners. Now, the court upheld the board's decision that the parcels were merged, but that decision didn't necessarily provide a step-by-step process for how to implement its holding, like even conveying the property back into the original ownership. But that is obviously something that is necessary to implement the holding. Likewise, a merger deed is necessary to implement that holding that upheld this board's decision. So our argument is, let's do this right and avoid a headache in the future. And we're requesting that you do not approve the site plan until the site plan application reflects that it's a single lot for zoning purposes and that a merger deed has been filed. We don't want an error staying on the property record.
So your, in short, your representation to us is that the plan before us is inaccurate and that it shows two lots when in reality there is only one?
Correct. And that to avoid future issues down the line with another owner coming in and trying to build on that smaller lot again, we should take care of this now and avoid a mess in the future.
Anything else?
Nope, that is, that is our, our sole two issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Laura, there is evidently, I'm not sure what your records show, what town records show, if it is in fact recorded, that this lot's status has changed from two to one. Apparently, this has been adjudicated.
So my understanding, after my discussion with Craig, and I must believe the same will come from the applicant, is that for the purposes of planning and zoning, it's treated as one lot. It's not required for the applicant to merge them as, to note as one lot.
So you're saying that the applicant, it's okay for the applicant to represent it as two lots when that's not accurate?
It's not being represented as two lots. There are two lots. However, for the purposes of planning and zoning, it's treated as one lot. So the, you know, in reference to, so the whole lot is 1.8 acres. But for the, and I, maybe it's more of a legalese item, but my, he doesn't need to merge them to say that there is one whole parcel.
So, so the position is that it is two lots and not, as public comment represented, that in fact it is not two lots, it is one lot. Is that, was that your?
I think the distinguishing factor, and just in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm, I'm one of the attorneys that litigated this in court, so I'm well versed with what Mr. Caffrey's office is presenting. What the court had indicated is that for zoning purposes, that the two lots are to be treated as one. I still have two separate SPLs. I still have two separate lot descriptions for the two lots. And I still get taxed on two separate lots. The court decision didn't say, didn't say these lots need to be merged, a corrective deed needs to be filed. What the court indicated was that you're not, I'm not able to build on the smaller lot, the twenty-seven point two. When Mr. Caffrey, when I was on the agenda a month ago, had initially said, "Well, you're showing these all as one lot. That's not correct. They're in two separate names." At the time, it was still, the smaller lot was still in my partner's name. Personally, in the larger lot was in the name of the LLC. So what I did was I went and I had my partner sign a deed to deed the property over into the LLC. So now both lots are in the name of the LLC. The town code has a provision that if you have two lots that are owned adjacent and are in the critical environment area, that they're treated as one. So if somebody was to come before you, similar to this, and was to have two lots that are owned in the same name, they would have to represent to the, to the board, to the planning board or the zoning board, these, for zoning purposes, are treated as one lot. And the map isn't intended to deceive. I certainly could amend the map if that's a condition that the board wants to reflect that it's one lot. I thought I was advancing Mr. Caffrey's position and by showing that it technically is two SPLs, two section block and lots, two lots that have two separate descriptions. But again, the position from the town, and I would agree with that position, and it supports the decision that came out of Judge Alfredo in the Supreme Court, is that these two lots for zoning purposes are treated as one.
Okay, so the, it sounds as though the issue that we are, that this board is not concerned with tonight is a civil matter. And for, for planning and zoning purposes, what we have before us can be fully considered by this board regardless of those civil matters that may be pending.
They would have to be settled afterwards, after the decision in this board.
It doesn't impact, it doesn't impact on the site plan?
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from members of the board?
I think the logical question is to ask him if he has any opposition to merging the two lots.
Yeah, he said he would.
Well, what does that have to do with the application?
I don't, I don't have any opposition to the site map being shown as one whole. What I'm, what I'm not a fan of doing is having to go back and file new deeds after I jumped through all kinds of hoops on Mr. Caffrey's part just to try to make him happy, which I was told by the town I didn't have to do. But, you know, to me, the deeds don't need to read one is merged to the other. The decision from the court doesn't indicate that, but for the town zoning purposes, separate and in part of what the SBLs are and the legal descriptions of the lots, the town code indicates that they are to be treated as one for zoning purposes. So if it's the preference of the board that these lots for zoning purposes are shown as one, for clarification.
Well, that's not typically how we see property. I mean, if they're two lots with one owner, they're shown as two lots with one owner.
However, this is where this steps in, is that it was challenged, and therefore, when the evaluation of this property came before Judge Afrodou, it was determined that it be treated as one, as one lot. And reference, that's how it's been read according to the town. So it has, it's not something that we have seen before. This is the first time we're seeing this after that decision.
Right.
Greg, I thought I heard you say, I might have heard you wrong. You said you'd, I thought you said you'd amend the deed to show one lot.
No, I don't mind amending the map itself for the purposes of the planning board review. But to me, the decision from the court wasn't, these two lots need to be merged. That's not what the decision says. What the decision says is that these two lots are to be treated as one for zoning purposes, such that a house could not be built on that smaller lot.
So you're opposed to merging the lots?
I don't think that that's relevant for what's...
They're not merged now, as we sit here.
It's not relevant to us.
Right.
I understand that.
And if we change the map to make it appear that it's one lot when it's really two, then we're not going to accurately be seeing what is represented. I mean, we haven't done that with other applications.
So, you know, not necessary for him to even do that, even though I think yes, he would. So, but it sounds to me that once, once this is acted upon, that whatever happens between you and the other, I mean, and the neighbor of the lot firm, it's something you have to settle on your own. It's not something that we, we can't get into the middle of.
The same person owns both lots.
Right.
Well, I understand. I don't have a problem with that. No.
He can do anything he wants with it.
But I guess what she was saying, if he sells one lot...
What is the issue, David?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, for lack of a better word, to me, it's extreme paranoia that if I sell one lot and without the other lot, and that new buyer comes in and tries to do something, build on the smaller lot. But that's not what's before you today.
I understand.
I mean, technically, what I could have done was file two separate applications for each lot. That way, one lot wouldn't have anything to do with the other lot, because the two site plans, one is entirely on its own site for the, for the stairs and the, and the wood chip area, little picnic area, as I call it, and the, and the other part of the application is relative to the driveway, which is again on its own separate lot entirely.
Speaking of the wood chip, I did have a question before you all started. Now, wood chip area is near the fence, putting that near the fence?
Yes, sir.
And what are you going to use that for again?
It's a little picnic area, just at the top of the stairs.
So you can be down by the lake?
Correct. Yeah, so if boy wanders down there swimming, mama bear's got a chair that's overlooking.
Okay.
Are there any written comments, Laura?
There are written comments. I'll read this one from the Lake George Waterkeeper. It's dated May 17th. "The above referenced site plan modification application was personally reviewed in my capacity as a licensed professional engineer and the Lake George Waterkeeper. The Waterkeeper appreciates the applicant's amendment to the application to satisfy conditions of prior, the prior approval of 422 of 2008 by planting trees on the fill slope. The Waterkeeper questions the necessity and purpose of the proposed project, especially installing eight feet of fill on steep slopes within the critical environmental areas surrounding Lake George, and whether the intent for the project could be facilitated by using the existing driveway. The Lake George Waterkeeper requests the planning board apply the town's regulations specifically to 179-6 during your deliberations regarding the above referenced site plan modification."
Okay, thank you, Laura. And you have, you have reviewed that, correct, as part of the application process?
Right. And so just a note, I mean, Amanda read this into the record, but there is the letter that's been submitted by Caffrey's office.
I have two points to clarify, if I can, very clearly.
That's, that's up to the chairperson.
Yes, we'll, we'll allow it. Go ahead.
Well, it actually...
If you could speak out of the microphone, please. We want to make sure we get our minutes. I would also add that we have had some discussion about the civil matter that you brought to our attention this evening. And it is our position that that does not have an impact on what we have before us this evening.
Yes.
So you need not go through that again.
Okay. Well, first to the status of the civil matter, it's not, it's not ongoing. A judgment was issued and has been filed, not appealed. And a copy of that decision was attached to the April 20th letter that was submitted. And to quote from page seven, "The court finds that the ZBA's decision that the project lot and Dark Bay lot merged, and that the project lot, the smaller lot, is not a legal buildable lot, and that was a reasonable interpretation." So to the extent that you are limiting it to just for zoning purposes, that's not necessarily in this decision. So those are just the two points, is that if you'd like to review the decision as to the merger of these two lots, and that it's been merged since 1973, according to courts, and that that litigation is complete.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. With that, we'll close the public hearing. This is type two under SECR. Did you finish reading public comment, Laura, or are there additional?
I did. There's no more public comment.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions for the applicant?
I do have one, just for clarification. So just from my understanding, the driveway, we've got in our notes that there's going to be 790 square feet of new asphalt put down. Where is that on the plans? Because I see the gravel access drive.
Correct. That is, the proposal is a gravel driveway. Again, I call it an auxiliary driveway so that I can get the equipment down in there and get tree stumps and old remnants of the trees and the tanks out of there. It's not going to be an asphalt driveway. The application was for a crushed stone driveway.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. I guess we are ready for a resolution then on this application.
Motion to approve Site Plan Modification 27-2021 Dark Bay Properties LLC, according to the draft resolution prepared by staff of the following. One, waivers requested granted. Two, the approval is valid for one year from the date of approval. Applicant is responsible for requesting an extension of approval before the one-year timeframe has expired if the applicant has not yet applied for a building permit or commenced significant site worth. Three, adherents to the items outlined in the follow-up letter settled this resolution, including items A through K.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
So I just want to revisit the legal question again. You know, if we should have it reflected in, well, it is reflected in the record in the minutes, but if there should be any reference in the, in the motion, I guess I'm just having a difficult time reconciling, you know, knowing that there's court action that may or may not have been taken...
We're not to consider it as part of zoning and planning, and I think the matter's been settled legally.
Yeah, I think we've been instructed that for planning and zoning purposes, we consider it one lot. So the issue of...
I don't see what we have any bearing in that.
It's a moot issue, but it's good to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, wouldn't change the site plan at all.
Right.
We certainly don't have any issues with the site plans. Just that legal issue.
And there is information now in the record regarding the existence of this civil issue. Anything else? Maria, can you call the vote for us, please?
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Padid?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. They're all set.
Greg, do you want these? Do you want these?
I didn't want them.
The next section of our agenda is Planning Board Recommendations. The first item is Stephen A. Burnett, trustee, Site Plan 28-2021. And this is also under unapproved development. Laura?
So this application is to complete work on an existing one and a half story cabin. The existing cabin footprint is 1,365, and the proposed is 1,312. And then in reference to the floor area, it's 1,793. This existing house, there is, also has an existing house on the site. There's no work proposed on that.
Excuse me, Laura.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm really having a hard time. Maybe my hearing's going.
No, that's all right. I'm trying to talk through a mask into a mic.
Yeah, I know.
So in reference to this project, this project has been under a stop work order, and the applicant is proposing to complete this project. This included, because he started work, there's a portion of this house that was damaged by, I believe, a falling tree. And the applicant started work. In addition to that, work on that side of the cabin, there was work started in the interior, and there's still work to be completed on it. The, under, the basement area is now considered to be new floor area as part of this project because when this cabin was built, it was not part of, we didn't consider basement area as part of the floor area. So that's why the floor area seems to be jumping in place. And then the variance that's being requested is for this north side, where 22.8 feet is proposed and 25 feet is required. In addition, the applicant is proposing to install a new septic system for this.
Okay, thank you, Laura. And we'll just note for the public that there is no public hearing on this application this evening because they are not here for site plan review. They're here for a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on the variance. So... Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tom Hutchins, Hutchins Engineering, here on behalf of the Burnett Family Trust and its principal trustee now of Stephen Burnett. And this property, as it existed, goes back in the family to the, he said, before the 1920s. It's had some generational hand downs. They're both very old structures. In the early 2000s, there were two brothers, Stephen and his brother, who kind of had the, each had the domain of one house. And one brother used one house, and the other brother used the other house. And at that point, in 2015, they actually applied for a subdivision, and there were variances involved. They wanted to split and separate properties. One brother wanted to do something different with it, and one didn't. That variance was denied to allow a subdivision of the property so the two families could have their own peace. So, so to make a long story short, Stephen Burnett ended up acquiring the other brother's share of the property. So he, he and the Burnett Family Trust are now the owners of the entire property, which contains two residences. The cabin that the other brother's domain was in, was in rough shape when he acquired it. Subsequently, there was some more damage, a tree landed on it, and they did initiate some repairs at that point to try to dry it up and clean it up. And...
Yeah, it sounds more like more than repairs.
The work snowballed, no doubt. And this was over a considerable period of time. So where we are now is they're under stop work for any buildings work so that we can get resolved with, with planning and zoning as well as, as well as buildings. The building plans have been updated, and they're ready for, ready for a review. They are proposing to rebuild on the footprint as it has historically existed, with the exception that actually a deck will be made a little bit smaller. What Laura mentioned with floor area, there are, there is a basement, a partial basement underneath this. It's on a, it's on a fair slope. There's a partial basement underneath and a full main floor. So we're proposing to renovate, reconstruct a portion of it that was, that was badly damaged. On the identical footprint, it's historically had. In order to do that, the northerly setback is 22.8 feet, where 25 is now required.
And because you're on the same footprint, that setback is, remains the same as it was before the damage occurred?
That setback remains the same.
Okay.
So we're modifying a non-conforming structure technically, although when it, well, when it was built, it probably wasn't zoning. But a lot of things have changed since then. So Mr. Burnett, I've talked to him again today, and he just wants to clean this up and, and move on and try to make this, this functional, functional building. So with that, I guess, listen to any comments and hopefully we can get a favorable recommendation toward the zoning board.
Okay, thank you. So again, the, for the board, the, as noted, the variances for 22.8 feet where 25 feet is required. With that, we'll open it up to questions, comments from members of the board.
That's the only variance?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's it.
Good.
Yeah, and it's, they're not increasing it, they're not decreasing it, but they're using the same footprint. So it's, it remains, would remain the same if approved.
Tom, when you started working on that, that was because of the tree falling on it, and it had to be done, I assume?
Yeah, the building needed work. It needed work, and subsequently, there was additional damage when a tree fell. I don't know the extent of it. This has been going on for years, and I've been...
You don't know if it started before the tree fell or after the tree fell?
The work? To be perfectly honest, I don't know. It's been going on for several years, and I've been involved for a few months.
I remember the subdivision, though. I remember the story. Yeah. The brothers.
Yeah, that wasn't that long ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago. Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
But these two properties, are they sharing one septic system? I see the one for, where the...
No, there's, there's another existing septic system serving the other house that they fully intend to upgrade. But he's just trying to take things one step at a time right now.
That's not part of this application.
Right. There will be a new septic system serving the cabin that is this application.
Any concerns on the maintaining the existing setback variance? All right. Does anyone have any concerns that they want to reflect in a referral to the ZBA regarding the variance? I guess we're ready to hear that motion then.
Motion to make a recommendation on behalf of the planning board to the zoning board of appeals for area variance number 27-2021, Stephen A. Burnett, trustee, planning board based on limited review, has not identified any significant adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated with the current... has not identified any significant adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, Maria, did you get that?
Mr. Schaefer? He said it at the same time.
Yeah. Say again? There is no public comment on this particular application. But thank you for the reminder, because I do forget from time to time. Can we have the vote then, please, Maria? Or did we have?
Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Deeb?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. You're off to the ZBA.
Can't change the order.
Next on our agenda, also under Planning Board Recommendations to the zoning board of appeals, is John Graziano, Site Plan 30-2021. Laura?
Okay. So, this applicant proposes residential additions to an existing home of 1,900 square feet, has a floor area of 3,137 square feet, a two-story addition of 886 square feet, a single-story addition of 124 square feet, and the existing porch will be covered at 344 square feet. The variance relief saw it as for setbacks.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Clark Wilkinson with the Environmental Design Partnership. We're representing this project for John Graziano. We're here tonight to get a recommendation for the ZBA. As Laura indicated, the lot is 22,135 square feet. There is a two-story addition towards the, proposed at the rear of the house away from the lake. This is one of those weird lots on Assembly Point, where Assembly Point Road is actually in between the house and the lake. This project, again, includes the two-story addition, two-bay garage on the, on the bottom and living space above. The other proposal is for the deck, to be a covered deck increase to match some of the architecture. And that's where we're getting into the variance request. The existing deck exists at 6.7 feet from that existing property, or from the property line to the north. And with the proposed addition to that covered deck, we're changing it down to five feet from that north. The project also includes elimination of a large amount of impervious area. We are proposing to bring the impervious area down approximately 1%. So, we're increasing the green space on this property. And also, the project includes a new Clarus-type septic system. Again, the board is familiar with those. We've presented them from our office a number of times. They're very top-of-the-line septic systems that we feel is going to work best in this case. This project meets all setbacks from the lake and all other setbacks to the property, except for that north side that's going, again, from 6.7 to five feet. We also know that the, note that there was a letter, I don't know if it was submitted to Laura or not, there was a letter from the adjoining owner to the north in favor of the project that we wanted to make sure was, if she didn't have it, that we could include in the record. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the board for questions, comments, and discussions.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'll remind the public that this is a recommendation to the ZBA, and therefore, there will be no public hearing this evening. Once they're through the ZBA, they will be back for site plan review, and at that time, there will be public comment. Open it up for questions, comments from the board regarding the variance for setbacks, floor area, and shed location. Is my notes are wrong?
I don't think I don't think that's probably this one.
We have a total of 4,700, and we're allowed 5,000.
The staff notes do say floor area. Shed location. Setbacks for area and shed.
Yeah.
I was going to ask a question of Laura, too. It's not a huge difference, but in one reference, we have 0.48 acres, and then in the second list, we have 0.52 acre. Not a huge, but why do we have to do this?
That's a great question.
So, Laura, all our questions have been to you while you were gone.
You're welcome.
Okay. What's going on?
Well, the agenda, in addition to the setback variance, the agenda talks about floor area ratio and shed location.
Okay, so the shed location has been resolved.
Right.
Yep, and then floor area.
Floor area ratio, we have, we're below.
You're below. So, it's, there's not a floor area issue at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's just that setback.
Just the setback, okay.
To go into a little more discussion about the shed, the shed we show proposed behind the driveway there, between the driveway and the septic.
Yep.
That currently exists close to the south property, and it exceeds 120 square feet. So, it was built without permit, so we're picking up and moving in to make sure it meets all setbacks.
Understood. Okay. All right, so the only thing left that we have is the increase, the variance, and the increase in the variance from 6.5 to five feet in the, in the setback, right?
Correct.
All right. Questions, comments from the board on that variance request?
I don't have an issue with the variance, but one of the questions that I have, you know, with all of the, really, most of the properties along that road, the way the water sheds down off the, you know, down the hill, across the road, and into the lake.
Correct.
And, you know, you're putting in the pervious pavers to help with that. But I just wonder, you know, with the driveway and the front lawn, if there's other things that you could do.
Next sheet on that, there's two sheets from that drawing. We included that in the set of drawings that we showed pictures along that frontage. And the property currently meets the requirements of the buffer, the waterfront buffer, with all the current plantings that are
Right.
And that's shown in those photos.
Other questions, concerns regarding the variance?
Well, I'm not the variance, but we do as a note, in the staff notes. I'll be reminding the applicant next, for next Thursday, that I'll fix yours, light fixtures up, be compliant.
Laura, I was just curious why the staff notes note 0.52 acre parcel? And in the agenda, it's a 0.48 acre? I know it's not a lot, but I was just
So, what's, what's going on is, again, it's the, one's referring to a survey, and one is re-survey, re, looking at the GIS acreage. So, because the road is now in there, the GIS acreage actually doesn't account for the road being in there.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I just wanted to understand.
The actual lot, surveyed lot is 0.52.
Interesting.
Yeah.
All right. Does anyone have any concerns that we want to communicate to the ZBA in our referrals? I'm not hearing any, but I was asked to be sure. Hearing none, I guess we're ready for a motion.
Motion to make a recommendation on behalf of the planning board to the zoning board of appeals for area variance number 31-2021. John Graziano, planning board based on limited review, has not identified any significant adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Maria, can you call the vote force, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Deeb?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsner?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. You're off to the ZBA.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, also under Planning Board Recommendations, San Souci, Site Plan 33-2021, and special use permit 3-2021. Laura?
Okay. So, this applicant requests approval for a parcel 333 and 337. One is a, the restaurant, you, restaurant building, and the other is the residential property. They're asked, requesting outdoor seating area to be included in both parcels. Some variances came up upon reviewing the residential parcel. There was an existing, what occurred to be a garage, which is pretty much used as a storage shed. It just happens to have the greater than, or the six-foot width door, triggering it to be a garage. And then there was the issue of, there was a deck expansion at some point. I've identified those reliefs for each of those items. In addition, it also triggers the floor area on the residential lot. What else is there? Setbacks?
Parking.
And parking. The variance for the restaurant parcels and reference to the parking.
Okay.
We need additional information, but maybe John can clarify as well.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, John Lapper with Tom Center from Hutchins Engineering. So, this is kind of a big story.
It's unusual, yes.
More than usual. The Sands has been there since 1913, as I understand it. And it functions in the southern basin of the lake as a social gathering place. Not everyone on the same night, but, because it's not that big. But everyone on Cleverdale, Assembly Point, Pilot Knob, and then going down Dark Bay to the village, or to the town of Lake George. It's always operated that way. It's, you know, been owned by a number of people over a number of years, for a significant number of years. And then somebody else would sort of be brave enough to take it over and, you know, maybe just lose money or just make a little bit, and it's just because it, it just sort of works as everybody's living. So, Larry Klute was the prior owner, and I guess what Laura's referring to. You know, that there was a deck or the garage was, shed was moved there for storage, was before the current applicants owned it. So, about three years ago, I think it was in 2018, about six families got together and said, you know, Larry's sort of getting tired of owning it at this point, and we might want to make sure it stays as the same use and gets improved. And so, they all pooled their resources. They, they bought the restaurant and also the A-frame, which is, so it's 333 and 337, the building next door. I know you're all familiar where it is, but this is on the inside between Mason Road and Cleverdale Road. So, it's not anything on the lake. It doesn't affect the lake. And as part of the improvements that Larry did when he owned it, it now has holding tanks. I'm not sure that Laura notes said that. I threw us a reference to septic system, but it does have, have holding tanks, so there's not any issue in terms of impact on, on the lake with that. The, the way it functions, and it's all like white-haired guys like me, it's not, you know, it's not a loud place. It's not a bunch of kids. It's all my friends that, that bought it. But the way, the way it, it functions is that people pull up and park, double park, because there's very limited parking, and they'll say, you know, there's a white Toyota that has to be moved. I mean, it just, it just kind of works, and a lot of people walk there. People drive, too, but a lot of people walk there from Cleverdale, and it's always worked that way. But the applicants, you know, they bought it before COVID, cleaned up the inside, painted it, carpeted it, and just it looks a lot sharper than it did. So, so during COVID, like everywhere else, they were allowed to have outdoor seating and, and still do. And this application is essentially to make the outdoor seating permanent, because it works really well on the lot. And it's, it's, not only is it between the roads and not near the lake, but in terms of the neighbors, there's parking on both sides of Mason Road on the top and Cleverdale Road on the bottom. And the seating area is in between the parking areas. So, it's important for the owners to have the outdoor seating, because it's just a nice thing to have. And we think that going forward, even after everybody's hopefully vaccinated, people are still going to be more comfortable being outdoors. So, you know, the kitchen is limited. It's not, it's not going to dramatically increase anything in terms of capacity. It's still going to take a while to get your burger, but it's just to have a nicer area outside. So, that's the story. I know that there were dozens of letters from people that, you know, that may not have come to you for this, but they'll come to you and the zoning board after we get through the zoning board, that a lot of people weighed in and said, "This is important to us." So, with that, I'll let Tom come up and just talk about the specifics of the permeability and the parking numbers.
Okay, thank you. While he's doing that, I'll also advise the public that this also being a referral to the ZBA does not have a public hearing this evening. So, just note that, if you would. Good evening.
Evening. Tom Center with Hutchins Engineering. As John said, the tavern parcel is probably the easiest parcel. The only variance we're looking for there is for the parking, for less than the required number of spaces. And I think he did a good job of explaining how they manage the parking for that, for that parcel. But also, there's no, there's no hard surface. There's no new work at all proposed with this project. This is to use the, the existing surfaces on both lots. So, there's nothing that this owner has, you know, done to change those things. The patio was existing when he bought it. It actually dates back, I believe, to 2008, between 2008, 2012, if you look at GIS mapping for those areas. So, as far as the tavern parcel, we looked at the, the holding tank capacity. They use water-saving fixtures. They don't use a lot of water. You know, for a restaurant, you'd think there'd be a ton, but there's actually capacity. There's more than enough capacity for the existing seating, plus the new seating, to, to manage what they're looking to do here with, with a factor of safety built in also. So, they have, they've done a great job of water saving. That was one of the things when we did it, we overdesigned the, the holding tank capacity. As far as the residential parcel, the variances that, that are there regarding the permeability, which includes the patio that was built that, that kind of borders both the residential and the tavern parcel, where the seating is to occur. And the driveway, the hard surface for the garage, also that factors into the permeability for that variance. The deck has to be treated as a front setback, because you have part of the deck, it would be a 30-foot setback for the Mason, or Cleverdale roadside. And then the, the other side is a rear setback. So, there's two setback variances for the deck. And there's also two setback from the side, and the two sides, I'm sorry, the side and the front for the garage. And then the last variance really is just the, the five acres for the special use permit, that's similar to what they have for the San Souci lot itself. So, it's pretty straightforward. Again, there is, there is no new hard surface proposed for this. They want to use the existing areas that are there for the outdoor seating.
Hey, thank you. Questions, comments from members of the board?
No, I have, just a comment. The San Souci is kind of an iconic institution on, on Cleverdale, like you said, 1913. I remember when I was a kid, I used to go there. And it's been interesting, I've been on the board, what, 10, 12 years? How many times have we seen them come up here? And they, it's, it's like they, they, I mean, it's, the size of the property limits everything that you can do. And yet, it has such a lure in the, in the area that we have to look at it somewhat through jaded eyes sometimes. So, it's interesting. I just want to see how many times it's come up and how many owners it's had over so many years. So, but it is an institution, an iconic institution in Cleverdale. So, I, I guess we give it consideration every time it comes up. All I got to say. I'm taking Brad's part.
Any other questions, comments, leading to a referral to the ZBA on these variances?
Certainly. Tom, I noticed one of the tables is right at the bottom of the entry steps. I assume that, that can be moved?
Yes.
See it right at the bottom of the steps?
Yep.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I wanted to say is, it's amazing how the residents all self-police themselves when it comes to parking. So, even though there are parking regulations, it seems that you have solved a lot of that with the, with the people coming up, supposedly. Let's say supposedly. So, anyway.
Yeah, they just manage it as best they can?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the concern that I have, I mean, I'm all in favor of, you know, temporary approvals during COVID. And I don't think we do enough, you know, to help our hospitality industry, you know, get through the impacts of COVID. So, I, you know, I can't say enough how much I would support that. The question, though, is by adding tables, aren't you going to make the parking issue worse?
Well, this is a unique situation. Well, this is
You know, once we get into, you know, well, starting tomorrow, right?
Correct. Well, this is a unique situation for them, because it's a neighborhood place where they have a lot of foot traffic to, to there, to the Cleverdale. It's not somewhere where, you know, I live down in Glens Falls, am I going to drive all the way out to the way out to Cleverdale, you know, often to go out to eat there? I, it's more of a neighbor, you think of it more of as a neighborhood, you know, place that's used there and their system that they have, you know, of pulling cars forward. They, you know, you can't claim it, from, from an engineer's standpoint, from a design standpoint, you can't claim it as parking, but they do double park. They do all kinds of, of things that you wouldn't normally see on a plan that works for the San Souci that has worked since it's been there. So I guess that's, you know, the parking system, if somebody sees that there's no parking, they go somewhere else. You know, they don't, you know, there's no other place to, to kind of.
And if no changes proposed to the ability to serve additional?
No, no, there's no, there's no additional capacity to the kitchen, there's none of that, that's all done. That, that capacity isn't increasing. I think it became a factor, talking with a few of the owners and talking with John, is that during COVID, they had the opportunity to put the tables out there.
Right.
It had a huge, you know, a huge effect, that people really liked it.
Oh, yeah.
And the owners thought, let's get permission to, to use this area. It was already on the other parcel. They own both parcels together, and that certainly can be conditioned that, you know, they have to continue to own both parcels and, and have it on there. And it's, you know, it just became accepted. I don't believe there was any complaints that were issued to the town during this time. It's been a year now, it went through a whole season. So I guess this, you know, from their point of view is like, hey, let's get permission to do this, you know, for a time, and do it reasonably. You know, I think what they're, what they're looking at is what worked for them and what was out there, and kind of be reasonable about what they were asking for in the space that they already had, you know, at least when they, when they purchased it.
Tom, one other thing, so site plan lighting information, but the site hasn't been provided. We may request clarification.
Yeah.
Now through lighting request code.
Yeah. As, as a matter of fact, as, when we talked to one of the owners yesterday, one of the neighbors' complaints was about one of the spotlights, which he actually did, you know, change the direction of the spotlight. But certainly, we can put a condition on there to, to do downcast lighting and change the fixtures in that area. That's, that's not an issue. We talked about that yesterday.
Yeah, we often, we often skip over lighting when, when we say, well, it's going to be residential lighting.
Right.
But I can tell you, there's a, there's a house not too far from here. I run real early in the morning, and they have two spotlights, and they're on a corner lot.
Yep.
And they just blind you. I mean, if you're driving your car or you're walking down the street, you're completely blinded. They're residential spotlights.
No, certainly, certainly that, that one in particular, we can change to a downcast light.
Well, I think all the lighting.
That was it. That was a question. Yeah, we have to come back.
Yeah, that's a site plan question.
I understand.
Yep.
I want to mention that.
Are you proposing any changes to the hours of operation?
No, the same.
So the tables have been tested already?
The tables, the tables and the picnic tables and the patio tables have been tested, and people have been.
You didn't see a dramatic change in parking or?
Yeah. I mean.
Any, anything that we want to include in our referral to the, to the ZBA? I'm not hearing anything, but I just wanted to ask. All right, I guess we're ready for that referral recommendation.
Motion to make a recommendation on behalf of the planning board to the zoning board of appeals for area variance number 28-2021, 333 Cleverdale LLC, San Souci. Planning board based on limited review, have not identified any significant adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Maria, can you call the vote for us, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
DB?
Yes.
Yes. You're off to the ZBA. The next item on our agenda, also under referral to the zoning board of appeals, is Town Fair Tire. Site Plan 32-2021. Laura?
Okay, I'm going to read this, and then I understand the engineer and the, and other rep are out in the parking lot waiting to come in. So in reference to this project, they're proposing to remove an existing 2,740 square foot building to construct a new 7,269 square foot building. Operations for a tire sales and service facility. Relief is sought for the building setbacks. I do note that under discussion, additional discussion, discussion on buffer landscaping, location of bays, the retaining wall information, service bay signage and lighting, and I had a discussion with John, so he understands some of those other items that may be brought up at a later time.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I was expecting Rob and John from Town Fair, and I did text them. But, so the, the only variance is the front setback to the road, and the, it's going to be moved closer to, you know, one foot closer from where the Pizza Hut is now, and it's probably better for the neighbor, the residential neighbors in the back of the building is closer to the road, closer to Route 9, and farther from the neighbors in the back. But this is a very unique business in terms of other tire centers. It's fancy wheels and tires, and you come in and you, the, the front is a showroom, and you pick what you want, and there's six bays just, just for tires. They don't do oil changes, they don't do, you know, any of that. It's just tires and wheels and alignments. And so the front is a retail store, and then the back, there are six bays that face the back, and Laura asked me about that because they're facing the residential. But it's all air-conditioned, and the doors come down, they never leave the doors open. It seems like it's very professionally run. They have 101 stores in Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New Hampshire, Maine, Vermont, New York. So it's a new England company, you know, one delivery a day. The other thing that happened here was that the existing owner, when they bought the Pizza Hut last year, they took down a bunch of pine trees, which were the, you know, the big, dangerous pine trees that can fall because they're so heavy. And Craig called and said, you know, you're supposed to, that's a buffer area. So in the contract, it's the, the buyer's going to remedy that as, you know, and what's proposed is a fence and, and a whole bunch of plantings, and that will be back to talk to you about all that after the zoning board. The only thing for the zoning board is just the, just the, the front setback, and it's, again, closer to the road by a foot than where the Pizza Hut is, and probably better to have it closer to the road.
Well, it certainly will be nice to see a new use for that, for that property. So, okay, so we're looking at the variance, it's a one-foot additional. Was there a, well, I guess the Pizza Hut's been there for so long, there probably was never an original variance for that.
Probably not.
Setback.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Questions, comments for members of the board?
I don't think they're asking for much on the setback for variance-related only. I, I have no issue.
Okay.
I will make a comment, totally unrelated to the variance, but I did go to Rhode Island over the weekend, and I made it a point to stop by Town Fair Tire, just to see what it looked like.
Was it nice and neat and clean, I hope?
It was. Very attractive building.
Huh. That's good.
I didn't go there just for that. Otherwise, you're going to think very.
That's, that's a relief. We're relieved to hear that.
So I assume the noise level won't be that great if the doors were down all the time? Can I get a sound there? Air conditioning?
Yeah, how about that? It's good for the employees.
Wow.
Yeah, the doors will always be closed. That can be a condition, but that's just how they operate.
Any, any concerns, anything that we want to express to the ZBA?
Delivery trucks not used weekly?
All right, I guess we're ready for a referral then.
She set up for nothing. Motion to make a recommendation on behalf of the planning board to the zoning board of appeals for area variance number 30-2021, Town Fair Tire. Planning board based on limited review has not identified any significant adverse impact that cannot be litigated, mitigated with the current project proposal.
We have a referral motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Maria, can you call the vote for us, please?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Tom Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Trevor?
Yes. You're off to the ZBA.
See you Thursday.
Aren't you glad we came out and got you?
All right. Next, we move into new business, and the first item is Chris Racicot, Site Plan 35-2021. This is another application for which there will be coordinated review. And I want to note, for the public's information, there is a public hearing scheduled for this evening, and we will open the public hearing, but the planning board, the only action we're going to be taking this evening is to request lead agency status. We will not be reviewing the project until it returns to us, we believe, in June, next month. So just make a note of that for the public hearing, and again.
Thank you, Chairman. Mike O'Connor from the firm of Littleton O'Connor, representing the applicant. The applicant is proposing construction of a 14-unit, two-story townhouse building of 12,740 square feet. The footprint will be 23,400, or that's the floor area. Each unit will have its own garage and a patio area. And if you've been up to the site, you'll see that what is proposed here is going to be a great improvement to what used to be a repossession auto yard. To put this together, apparently at one time, Craig had a question about access to the building that's going to go the length of the property into the property, and we worked out a exchange of easements between the owner of the main site and the owner of the property behind, where they have given each other easements so that they can have a hammerhead turnaround, which would allow vehicles, even emergency vehicles, fire trucks, to go down the driveway and then back into the other person's property and go back out all in one swoop. So I think we solved that problem. We have talked to the town about an out-of-district sewer agreement, and we are working on that. The two owners of the various parcels are cooperating even on that. So they're trying to put together a project that will work, and it's certainly going to be an improvement to that neighborhood if you, if you go up and take a look and see what's there. I went up this night, tonight, and tried to talk to the one other person that's affected, Rita Hayes, and she was not home. We really don't affect anybody significantly with what we're doing.
Okay.
If you have questions, we'll try to answer them.
Okay.
Here, he is the engineer for the project.
Okay, thank you. Well, this evening, we're, our action is really only to initiate the lead agency status application, and then the clock is ticking, and we'll be looking at it formally next month, we believe. Is that not correct, Laura?
That's correct. It's just lead agency status. If, if all parties, if the, you don't have to wait the 30 days if all parties consent. And so my hope is that the town board does, and then New York, or D E C is also a party to this because of infrastructure is my understanding. So my hope is that this can be completed in less than 30 days, so we can get it back in on June.
So we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And I believe we have a.
We're not done. We got to do it?
We have a resolution.
You want to get rid of that quick, Mike?
Hey, I've been sitting there for a long time. Well, suits aren't very comfortable.
What's that? When it comes back for cycling.
Yeah. Mike, when you come back, I just wanted to let you know, before we do this, on the CEPR resolution, question 20, you might want to check that. You, you had suggested, you didn't give any explanation, so.
What's the question number?
20.
20, okay.
Just go over that, okay? So you might want to bring that back, amend it.
Okay, I think we also have to come back with another middle to chase him. They had, they had a number.
They had a number, 15 of them.
Yep.
But I want to make sure, Mike, we put care of that now, so when you come back, it'll be done, okay?
Okay. Yep, thank you for the comment.
All right. Motion to seek lead agency status in connection with Site Plan 35-2021. Chris Raciot, as per the draft resolution prepared by staff.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a lead agency status request motion seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Maria, can you call the vote for us, please?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
John Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes. All right. And then the last item on our agenda is under a discussion item, so again, there's no public hearing on this. We're looking at C V E North America Incorporated, Discussion Item 3-2021. Laura?
Okay. The applicant proposes a seven-point megawatt DC community solar farm to operate at an 80-acre parcel. The project has several components. Some includes, I mean, the 25.2 parcel is own commercial intensive, and the solar farm is not a listed use as of yet. In reference to the parcel of 4.1, it contains wetlands. Those are noted on the materials that were submitted to you. So the project may be subject to an additional wetlands, as well as going through a petition of zone change possibility. Other things that come up, and this is, obviously, I noted here, and the staff knows that this is the first time we've, this is the first project we have under our new regs that were adopted in September of 2020, where solar farms are subject to site plan and special use permit.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Very good, so far.
I'm great. Oh, you have the materials up, and it looks like everybody's got a copy of them, too. I was going to hand them out, but. Does anybody not have a copy of the, of our project description or the site plan? All right. I'm Carson Wyman with C V E. Thanks for having us. Nice to meet you. Drove up from New York City earlier today. That's my team. Actually, Champion with Nixon Peabody is our counsel. Lou Greco with Tectonic, our civil engineer, and then Paul Lee, he's internal at C V E. He helps us out.
Just note that we are still operating under COVID guidelines, if you have your mask, please.
Sure. Sorry.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we just wanted to take this opportunity to have a sketch meeting with the board, introduce the project to you. It's a seven-megawatt DC, five-megawatt AC community solar farm. We executed site control with Richard Lasko of Forest Enterprises, you know, mid-last year, end, end of last year, and we've been designing the plans and working out all the kinks to get here up until this point. Access will be off of Quaker Ridge Road. It's the parcel, the main parcel is situated right behind the Walmart. That parcel is zoned commercial, light, industrial. And the access parcel, also owned by Richard Lasko with Forest Enterprises, is zoned commercial intensive. So we'll be seeking a rezoning for that parcel. A little bit about C V E, I skipped over that, but just a little context, we're about a 25-person community solar developer based out of New York City. We're part of a larger company called C V E Group. There's 200 employees worldwide. We have over 440 megawatts worldwide, and we have about 50 megawatts in permitting right now in upstate New York. So we have projects in all community solar projects of similar size in Queensbury, in Manlius, in Wheatfield, in Portland, down in Westchester, and another project in the town of Brunswick. Community solar means the local residents can subscribe and participate in the project. We're able to deliver monthly savings of 10% to their utility bills. Anybody with a credit score of 650 or higher can participate, and we'll target residents closest to the site first. So residents in the town of Queensbury will get access to the credits first, and from there, we'll move further out. The project is currently designed with a grass access road that maybe, if you have questions about that, Lou can talk further about that in more detail. And all of our projects, part of our green initiative at C V E is that we have pollinator-friendly vegetation underneath the panels, so a bed of grasses and flowers. vegetation underneath the panels, so a bed of grasses and flowers. And then we also make a donation to a local environmental agency or group or project, $1 per panel. So there's probably about 12,000, 13,000 panels here, so we'll make a donation locally of about $12,000 to $13,000. And I think that's the gist. That's, that's a, an overview. I'll stop there and see if you have any questions. We got, we submitted an interconnection application with National Grid and we got positive results back a couple of months ago, so interconnection is not an issue. We're actually crossing through a National Grid right-of-way behind that Walmart. There's a big high transmission line and we're actually connecting underground. There's another set of power lines underground that is a voltage that works for our system. So we're planning to connect there. The substation is, is maybe a half a mile east of the property, so it's, it's a really good site for, for interconnection. And it's definitely out of view, out of sight. It'll be out of sight and out of mind. You know, I drove to the site this afternoon to get a look at it and it's hidden behind the, the brush, behind the Walmart pretty well. The Noah Butters.
I think the site is a good spot for it.
Yeah.
I like that.
How close is it to the cedar swamp?
To the what, I'm sorry?
To the great cedar swamp.
I'm not sure. Is that maybe northwest of the property? Because I know there's some wetlands. It gets pretty damp on the northwestern edge.
Yeah.
I know it's just south of that county airport.
Yep.
And we're getting, we're performing, as we speak, a glare study to help, you know, provide some documentation, some context around that.
Yeah, that north-south runway is, is the one that's primarily used. So that's, that's gonna be a potential problem for pilots coming in if there's-
Sure, yep. We're performing a glare study. We're also getting a structure height confirmation from the FAA, which I know doesn't deal with glare, but they, they give it a non-interference declaration, so-
Well, there's a height limit in any case.
Right.
Have you made a point of studying the new part of 179 in our code?
No.
Okay.
Is that-
You might wanna familiarize yourself with that, obviously. That, that has a number of issues in there that you wanna, that will be part of any, any approval, obviously.
Can't be more than 12 feet high, for example.
Okay, that shouldn't be a problem. It'll be about eight and a half to nine feet high.
I think the code was just, just written, so.
Right.
One of the questions I-
I think the heights, not exceed 12 feet.
One of the questions I had was your pilot program. I see Queensbury did not want to partake in that, Queensbury School District. Any comments on that? I'd like to know if Queensbury's reasoning also, obviously more money.
Yeah. You know, the state provides a tracker of who's opted in and opted out of real property tax law 487, and the school district is opted out here. You know, I, I think we try to have conversations with the school district to get them back in, if that's an option, get their, their take on that. If not, you know, we'd approach the I D A, the Warren County I D A.
Well, they just had a school board election today, so-
Mm-hmm.
-they may get some new blood on there, you know?
Yeah. Well, I think there was also state-level change to the property tax methodology for renewable energy projects that was passed in the most recent budget. So I think even without relief from a pilot, a direct pilot or a pilot with the I D A, the property tax, even if it's assessed with the local assessor, the, the rates that will have to be enforced, the methodology to assess the project is much more fair and reasonable. They made that change this year, so not, not a project killer.
Do you have a, a hopeful timeline for this project from this stage to when it might be completed?
Yes. So we're planning to appear, make an official site plan application by the end of the month and appear back in front of the board in the middle of July. And then, you know, just work through the process from there. So hopefully maybe receive the purbits, depending on how it all goes, maybe end of the year into early next year, and then move towards construction.
Any idea how long construction will take?
About three to four months. There's gonna be a little bit of grading that needs to be done. There are some slopes on site, but we're working around that.
You would do all 12,000 panels at the same time?
Yes. And there, there'll be tracker panels, is what we've designed. So they, they're oriented north-south, they face east in the morning and west for the sun, and west in the afternoon.
Wow, interesting.
There are some wetlands on site. We've mapped that. We've performed, and we're, we're avoiding all wetlands. We're adhering to all wetlands buffers. We've performed a meets and bounds survey, a topographic survey. We've done a lot of work on the site and we're, we're getting all the materials ready for an official submission.
We probably will be interested in the, in a potential endangered species and also the, what was it, chippo, the archaeolite?
Yeah, right. That's in the works, too.
Okay. Just that I mention it. And by all means, you want to be, make yourself very familiar with the new, relatively new code that was passed into town for these arrays. There are some provisions in there that we will be especially concerned with. I know one of the things that I, I've been concerned with because of the nature of these panels is the cleaning up of the site as they age out. So that's something that you'll need to have detailed plans.
Mm-hmm.
I know some communities even have escrow accounts to help pay for that in the event that the owner, business fails or something like that.
Sure.
So I, I know I'm getting way ahead of the game, but I-
Yeah.
-mentioned some of these things.
Yeah, I, I think what you're referring to sounds like a decommissioning plan.
Yes.
You know, we can draft that and submit it with the town, record it with the town.
You have those with other, with your other sites, right?
Yes, yeah.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, yeah. One thing that came up in some comments leading up to this meeting was you mentioned a, the building and codes comments were a gravel access road around the perimeter of the project. Are there any requirements there, maybe for fire access, or what the thinking was?
So I can, I can address that. So I talked to the building and codes department. Obviously, when a project comes in, the information is shared amongst the different departments. And so the director, Dave Hatton, approached me and explained to me that it would need the gravel access. I don't know if you mentioned this, possibly a, a green entryway. And I don't know for that, whether that, it's something to communicate with building and codes department head, whether that's like a tough stone, like it's a product that is being able to be driven upon, or if it's really a grass strip. But my guess is that you're gonna have to come to some agreement about how access around the facility can be completed so that there is access for emergency vehicles if needed.
Okay, understood. Yeah, the current layout here has a 15-foot buffer between the panels and the fencing around the limits of disturbance, so we can increase that to 20 or 25 if needed and design some sort of road, whatever their specifications are. Is that, okay. Is that in the code, or is that just coming from?
It's possibly, it's in the code. I'm not, I just know it came from the building and codes director.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see if the solar code, so it sounds like-
Not necessarily the solar code, but building and codes, different.
Right, and so we're, I was just gonna say, I'm looking to see a little bit more toward what we're thinking here, but it sounds like the code officer may be amenable to discussions on, are proposals allowed and it's all going to apply in?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Yep, so it's a building, it's a building and codes which is separate than planning and zoning.
Sure, sure. But just really briefly, so you understand what we mean when we say grass?
Right, so the, the idea is because-
Can we get you on the mic, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So the, the idea is because the, the soil types, hydraulically or hydrologically, are, are conducive to keeping the site as green as possible.
If you could state your name for the record, too, please.
Sure.
Lou Greco, Tectonic Engineering.
So the, the idea is to have a gravel sur, or grass surface, but gravel supported underneath access road that would be able to maintain the weight of a, a fire apparatus. So if we could eliminate doing gravel around the perimeter and if it's not necessarily a fire apparatus, but it's something more like a pickup truck, an ATV, something like that, we can reduce the structural ability, but keep it grass surface so that the hydrology on the site, you wouldn't require stormwater basins. It would just, basically, you'd have runoff today, you'd have the same kind of runoff patterns after construction.
Okay, thank you.
But the access road, Lou, in any event, would be full capacity for-
Absolutely. The, the main access where the fire apparatus would be actually driving on would still have, would be able to bear the full weight of an apparatus.
I'll just identify that gravel surface and this is where additional discussion with planning staff would come into play, is a gravel surface is not, is considered hard surfacing in our code. It's not necessarily considered permeability, permeable.
Right.
So it's just a, a further discussion with, with me and other staff.
Right, so that, that's why we would want it to be a grass surface and then it would be gravel underneath for the structural integrity, but it would be grass surface so that it is permeable.
So I guess it's further discussion, because you're using a gravel, so it's just depending on, you know, what that detail looks like.
Absolutely, okay. We can provide that.
Do any members of the board have any additional questions for the applicant at this stage?
I have a question just out of curiosity. So in the northeast with our winters, how do you keep the snow away from these? And I, I think at some point, you'll probably have to pile it up, so you'd have to demonstrate some sort of storage area for the snow for removal.
Yeah, you know, we leave the snow on the panels, but we try to plow the access road. So that's, that's a question for the operations team, but it's not like we're going, we're not removing the snow from the panels during the winter. We're not manually moving them.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes our agenda for this evening. A reminder that we will be returning the day after tomorrow for our second meeting of the month. And we received what staff notes were available for the Thursday night meeting tonight. And if there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Please do.